All right, it is 7:33. It's Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, and I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunek.
Okay.
Terry.
Yes.
Stengline.
Here.
Johnson.
Okay.
Chesak.
Yes.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Okay.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Chesak.
Mr. President, I have one item to amend to the agenda include under new business, request to have a letter from the mayor to the governor of Minnesota about our SRO.
Thank you. We'll put that as nine E, letter to governor. All right, we have an offer to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. Item five is a consent calendar notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll clause or motion to adopt the consent calendar.
So moved.
Motion by Chesak, second by Terry. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That motion is adopted. Item six, our presentations. I believe we have none this evening.
We do not.
Thank you. And item seven is council committee report. Seven A is personal and finance committee chairman, Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four items on the agenda tonight. The first of which is to approve a withdrawal of the school resource officer agreement with ISD 181. The motion is to approve staff to work with Attorney Langle in withdrawing from the school resource officer service agreement with ISD 181 and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
I don't know if you read in the packet. It's a lot of information, but there was a law passed down in the state Capitol this year where as of August 1st, it changes how police officers can operate in the schools when they are contracted or employed by the school. So this is just to really eliminate any liability should something go wrong. I'm not an expert on it. The police chief can answer the questions if anybody has any, but the police chief recommended it. Superintendent Heidi Hahn was in our committee meeting, and while it's unfortunate that we're going to take this step, she understood that it is probably in the best interest of the city of Brainerd right now, and we're all hopeful that Governor Walz calls a special session. And this past weekend, he indicated that he possibly is open to the idea of a special session to fix the language in this law. But right now, this is to approve staff to work with Attorney Langle to withdraw, and Superintendent Hahn said if we approve this, she'll bring it to the school board for their discussion and hopefully approval to end the contract at their next meeting, which is the 11th. Thank you.
Perfect. Any other council comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak.
Based on what I just heard, is it required? I don't think it is that the school also agreed to end the contract.
I, I think.
What I read, it was just one party.
When I read it, I believe it said any one party can end it in 90 days, but we can end it immediately upon both parties agreeing.
And then, Mr. President.
Yeah, you have a four, Mr. Chesak.
The, the 90, nearly 92,000 for the first year here is going to be a cost to our police department budget. Are we prepared for that? Because we're not getting reimbursed, and we're still having that officer on duty. That's my question.
We're going to have a budget meeting in a week and a day. We'll let you know that. I mean, we don't know.
Okay.
We just got $600,000 for police.
Right.
Any other council comments? Chief Davis, anything you want to add?
Yeah, very unfortunate circumstances, and we're hoping, we do have immediate resolution. I appreciate the opportunity to consult with Attorney Langle as far as how we navigate through this. We, I had some initial ideas, but working with him, I think we're confident to where we can be attentive to the school's needs. Obviously, not in the same fashion, but also be separated enough to where our officers personally won't maybe incur some liability and also in the city as well. So unfortunate, doesn't feel good, doesn't look nice, but fair amount of confidence. This would probably be the reasonable way to proceed right now.
Thank you. Attorney Langle, anything you want to add?
Yes.
Finance Director Hillman, anything else besides Mr. Chesak's statement about the obvious on our budget?
Just that we were going to keep that 642,000 for police and fire for public safety, but yes, we could use it to help us balance the budget as well.
Aye.
President Bevins?
Yes.
I just want to make one more comment that I think this clearly shows that elections really do have consequences.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. We've asked for comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Please proceed.
Thank you. The next motion is to accept with regret the police administrative supervisor Julie McCullough's retirement effective November 30th, and to authorize severance pay per city policy, and further to authorize staff to begin the promotional process to backfill the position, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Terry. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're really going to miss Julie. She's had 28 years of service over at the police department, and that's just something you can't replace. But we are going to post internally and hopefully hire from within.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak.
Does anybody know she'll be at our appreciation party tomorrow? It'd be nice to see her.
Nobody knows.
Okay.
Any further comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. The next item is to consider voting operations, technology, and election resources, voter is the acronym, agreement with Crow Wing County. And the motion is to authorize appropriate signatures on the state of Minnesota Voting Operations Technology and Election Resources voter account, county municipal agreement for Crow Wing County to retain full voter annual appropriations until the county's annual funding allocation ever exceeds $50,000, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek. Chairman Johnson.
We, we could potentially make a couple hundred dollars a year off of this, but we just decided since the county does all the heavy lifting on the elections that we're just going to allow them to keep the full allocation until the allocation gets a lot bigger.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, the final item, we didn't have action on is discussion of this Lakes Media Collaborative ridiculousness. But, so they responded, and you know, their attorney's involved, our attorney's involved, and attorneys are racking up the billable hours right now. But ultimately, it looks like we paid them for one year that they didn't render services. And we could try to fight to get that, but we probably wouldn't have any standing according to our city attorney because staff has not been able to uncover any type of contract we've ever had in place with them. So we were just cutting them the government checks for 20 years, ch-chu-chu, cutting checks to charity illegally for 20 years, and we finally stopped it, but it doesn't look like we have any legal standing to fight to get this money, so we're just going to drop it.
Mr. Johnson?
Yep.
We did refer this to our attorney. I'd like to, I'd like to refresh the public's memory on if there's any possible liability that they may have for not fulfilling their 501(c)(3). I don't know if there is or isn't, but we asked, and I can't recall, and since it's on the agenda, let's refresh our memories. Is there, can we blow, if we feel that they didn't fulfill one year or at least some of their 501(c)(3), what's the status of being a whistleblower with the IRS? Or it would be, I believe, Minnesota, state of Minnesota, maybe.
It'd be the Attorney General's Office.
It'd be the Attorney General's Office. If you submit for a 501(c)(3) and don't pay taxes on your income based on that, and then don't fulfill the obligation of the 501(c)(3), is there a liability? And is it something we wish to notify the authority about? Sorry, that's a long question, Mr. Johnson. I've asked it to you, but if you need help from staff.
Yeah, I mean, I've actually looked into it, and there are like whistleblower forms you can fill out saying, I think this charity is misappropriating funds that it is, that the funds it received were intended to be used for. But I don't know anything about that. If maybe the city attorney does know something, I'd love to hear.
Well, or maybe you can put it on next, in two weeks' agenda.
Okay.
To give, to give the attorney time to look into that. Do you understand where we're going, where I'm going with this? And maybe, but within two weeks, you can come back with a recommendation. Are we off kilter here? I mean, but it seems like there would be.
I don't know if you're off kilter at this point, Kelly.
Regarding the, the, the tax status.
I, I like, I like your thread of thought there, Kelly, and you know, it is, it is $800,000 of taxpayer money that is just up in smoke. So, and if it's being misappropriated, somebody ought to be punished for it.
I would think so. That's, you know, I kicked in. All right, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Johnson?
End of report.
Any other questions on the Lakes Area Media Collaborative? Hearing none. End of report. Thank you. We'll move to item seven, B, Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman, Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Safety and Public Works had eight items tonight. First item was a event street closure application for the fire department to open house, and motion coming out of committee was to recommend approval of the attached application under the conditions listed in the attached event application, and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
Fire Department's having their open house October 12th, 2023, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on East River Road. If you haven't ever been to it, definitely get to it. If you have kids, definitely bring them to it. Usually, if I'm wrong, Tim, correct me, but usually free hot dogs and popcorn, and a lot of fun stuff to look at and do. So, that's all.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Item number two is another event street closure application for the Armed Forces Tribute Event. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the attached application under the conditions listed in the attached event application, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stengline. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
So this is a new event to be held in the county parking lot. They're just requesting some parking spots on South Fourth Street along the parking lot are left open for some of their programming. Sounds to be kind of a cool thing. They have a big, I think, National Guard hot air balloon that's going to be coming in for an hour or two. So that'll be on September 15th, 2023, 1:00 p.m. to 2:15.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Number three is a final pay request for improvement 23-02 crack ceiling. Motion coming out of committee was to approve the final pay request for improvement 23-02 crack ceiling in the amount, the amount of $25,200, and ISO move.
Second. Motion by O'Day, second by Chesak. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
Yes, staff actually trying to save us some materials for next year and keep this project fairly within budget. We just went a couple hundred dollars over, but we already had the $10,000 and, and change worth of materials for crack ceiling. The contractor got up to that $25,000 worth of work range. We still have some unknown amount of materials left that we're going to save for next year. Hopefully, the, the labor costs are back down a little bit. We'll have to wait and see. I doubt it, but at least we have some materials left over, and we did get a lot done this year. So.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Number four, we have a request from BNSF for South Fourth Street Crossing improvements. Long story short, I'll talk about it afterwards, but this, the motion coming out of committee was to request that staff reaches out to BNSF, mention some of these bullet points that we have, expand that with some from our discussion, and start this partnership with BNSF. And ISO move.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stengline. Mr. Chair.
So we received a letter from BNSF in the past couple of weeks requesting that we pay for half of the asphalt replacement and improvements for the crossing on South Fourth Street in 2024. In the, in the letter, the claim is that usually it's all the responsibility of the road authority, which would be us, but by state statute, it's actually the responsibility of the railroad owner. They've never asked for this before, but it would be, it would come down to about 104,000 is their estimate on our half. And I think, based on the difficulties that we've had in the past, working with the railroad, getting some things that we would like to see, like what you see here, purchasing the railroad between 11th and 13th Streets, that property, adding a crossing on Laurel Street towards the NP Center from downtown, sidewalk on 13th Street, chain link fence replacement on Washington, and maybe some screening improvements there, more grass cutting, allowing us to develop some of the land that we're forced to drive by looking like a, a dump. So this is, this is some of the discussion that we had, and hopefully, if we extend that olive branch back in that manner, hopefully, we get this good partnership started, and we can start to clean up some of that property.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak.
I'd like to see us look to the railroad to give us, or get that property there between 13th and Washington on the corner there for a big skateboard bowl.
That would be a great idea.
Thank you. You want to add that to the bullet point?
Sure.
I think we just did.
Any further, any further comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number five is authorizing staff to apply for the Minnesota DNR Relief Community Forestry Grant. And motion coming out of committee was to authorize staff to apply for the Minnesota DNR Relief Community Forestry Grant Program for the, for approximately between 60 to 100,000 dollars, and ISO move.
Second.
Motion by O'Day, second by Stengline. Any comments? Mr. Chair.
So this is what falls in line with a lot of stuff we talked about earlier this year about replacing trees that are either diseased, dead, areas that don't have trees that should. And there's a lot of different areas that are mentioned by staff in the list here. You can read through it if you'd like. But there's also other things you can do with this grant. It will help cover the cost of some of the implementation, not just the trees. Staff suggested they could do about $60,000 worth of work, and we thought, well, let's do as much as we can. And so we're going to leave that up to staff to figure out how much more we can extend that to plant as many trees as we can next year in that first year of our taking care of dead trees for people in the right-of-way program. And there's something else I was going to mention, but that's, pretty much covers what.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further comments? Mr. Chair, Gabe Johnson.
I really appreciate, Mr. President, how the DNR calls the program the Relief Community Forestry Grant Program, and the leaf is R-E-L-E-A-F. That is pretty cool.
It's like ordinance 420.
Yes. I know what I was going to say.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
The reason we want to do as much as we can next year is this is every three-year type of grant, so.
That was, that was actually a staff typo.
The relief.
Sorry.
Hopefully, we can find other grants to fill in in between, but this is every three years, so.
Thank you. Any further comments? Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number six was a change order for, number four, for improvement 2112, North Brainerd Reconstruction. Motion coming out of committee was to approve $9,991.80 in additional costs for fill, and up to $3,000 for temp grass seeding for phases three, two, and one, depending how far they can get with that amount of seed, and ISO move.
Do we have a motion on the table? We're going to look. Second, Mr. Chesak?
Second with a comment.
No. Any comments?
I think the 3,000 was an additional from what we originally, that amended to, that there was money for, maybe I could be corrected here.
I, I agree with Jeff's interpretation. The 3,000 were for the non-phase three extra seeds is what we were intending.
The motion was incorrect there.
So it's 9,99180 for the change order plus 3,000?
It sounds like they're saying 3,000 above and beyond Phase Three, which was what we were talking about. That's not what I heard in the meeting, but I'm fine with that. Basically, what we have is, in a drought year, none of the grass seed in our, in our seeding in the phases one and two took at all, so we have just weeds. And to go back through that, at least for this fall, we could get some rye grass in there, make it look like grass, make it actually fill in and mow it once or twice before it gets cold. It'll turn brown either way next year. It's too, it's too late to plant permanent grass seed in Phase Three, so we're going to have to go back and do it all in the spring anyway. The, the reason for this is you can't leave it black. You have to plant something, and we might as well plant rye grass, and if it's cheap seed, we can cover a lot of it with what I thought was 3,000 for the whole thing, but.
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak.
Engineer Dean, maybe you could clarify this? I think he's back there.
He's actually in his normal spot, Jeff.
Okay, I'm sorry. Did that sound correct to you from what we agreed on in committee?
I'll just, I'll take direction from the council and however you want to. Like I said, the, the number was kind of a ballpark estimate of what, what it might cost to seed it, but it's also not necessarily needed on the entirety of phases one and two because there's a lot of different homeowners that have taken care of their, their sections that probably don't need the temp seeding, so that should be sufficient.
Okay. So 3,000 should be sufficient for?
I believe so.
The majority of it to at least get the park back to where we want it?
Mr. Chair, I have a question on the whole project. I understand the, the grass issue or lack thereof, but is there not a fourth phase in this? Fifth Street?
No, sir. Everything is basically completed with the exception of the last of the establishment on Phase Three.
Something we talked about at one time and decided not to go through. That would have been Fifth Street. So just, that was it. Any further comments on the change order or the additional for the grass? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item is a discussion on rental dwelling license Board of Appeals. Most of you, some of you heard this discussion. It was pretty quick. Basically, we don't have a rental dwelling license Board of Appeals. We had, I believe, just Mike Duval, and we thank Mike Duval for, for taking on that responsibility or trying to by himself, but we did not have anybody apply for a very long time. So somebody has to take over. The discussion was either planning and zoning, SPW, or the council as a whole. We've, we were comfortable taking it on. So motion coming out of committee was to direct staff to draft an ordinance to make Safety and Public Works Committee the rental license Board of Appeals, and bring the ordinance as a first reading to the next city council meeting, and ISO move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
I'm going to go Mr. Chesak, then Mr. Johnson. Mr. Chesak?
If I'm not mistaken, ever since this committee was proposed to be filled, there has never been a need for this committee to meet. So I find that very interesting. It's just.
Okay, thank you. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. On its face, it looks like this is just a power grab by the Safety and Public Works Committee. But you know, 10 years of being on the council, that, that committee only did meet one time, I believe, to handle it. So I think, I think I'll grant them the power of meeting once every 10 years.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor.
You joke about that, but when I joined the council, I was told that this committee had never met in seven years, and within 30 days, I was sitting in this chair doing that work. So it has met, and it has done its job. However, this is probably a smarter decision because every week, I, every time we're in here, I say that there are five seats available.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We'll probably have to add that motion passes an extra five minutes to SP&amp;W at least every 10 years. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our final item was a direction on active code enforcement cases, and motion coming out of committee was to go ahead with staff recommendations on the memo for properties 1623 Emma Street, 1005 Third Avenue Northeast, 915 Laurel Street, 823 Willow Street, and 701 Fourth Street Southwest, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stengline. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Oh, was that a?
That was, that was an opposed, yeah.
That was one with one opposed. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Chair, O'Day?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Item eight is unfinished business. Item 8A is a call for applicants. We'll turn it over to the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
All right. Call for applications. The following committees and boards have seats available. You can find that information on our website. You know what it is. We have Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025, Library Board, one term expiring 2025. And on your agenda sheet, it says five seats available. However, we have scratched that. Why, we have scratched it. There are now officially zero seats available on the license board, rental dwelling license Board of Appeals, but TAC does have one available. So if you're doing the math here, it looks like we have six seats available for the mayor to fill, which this may be a record. This may be a record, ladies and gentlemen. Only six seats available on boards and commissions that the mayor recommends.
Item 8B, and I have nothing open, but there is a spot that's not listed for the EDA because right now, we're sitting with three council members on the EDA. I've, I've offered to relinquish my seat, so if we can replace that. I really would rather see citizens on that than, than council members. That's me. Parking Commission. I didn't want to tell anybody about that because that's going to.
He voted against it.
It's going to overwhelm staff. But we do have one spot on the parking, one term on the Parking Commission to expire 2026, and limited space to one. Item B is the final reading of proposed ordinance 1555, amending section 320, contesting administrative citations. Did you have something you wanted to share with what's, Administrator, is this the one that?
It is not.
It is not the one? Okay. So we will go to James Kronbeck, and James?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So proposed ordinance 1555, as a reminder, would make the city council the authority to review contested nuisance citations rather than a third-party attorney. Also, most violations of the zoning code would now allow for 10 days to correct the issue rather than 30 days. So staff's recommendation with this is a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance 1555, an ordinance amending section 320 of the city code and dispense with the actual reading. Note, a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous. Number two, hold a public hearing on proposed ordinance number 1555, and motion to adopt proposed ordinance 1555.
Any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Hearing none. The first order of business is we're looking for a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance 1555, an ordinance amending section 320 of the city code and dispense with the actual reading. Note that a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous.
So moved.
Motion by Stengline. Is there a second? Second by O'Day? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. I will now at 8:02 open a public hearing on proposed ordinance 1555, and ask if you're in the audience and wish to speak on this, to come on up and give us what you have to say. I'll ask a second time if you're in the audience or online, wish to speak. If you're online, star three will notify us that you wish to speak. And I'll ask a third time if there's anybody in the public that wishes to speak on proposed ordinance 1555. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 1555.
So move.
Motion by O'Day. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunek.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes, that ordinance is adopted. Next up is nine, new business, nine A, first reading on proposed ordinance 1556, creating section 1350 of the city code for micro mobility. Mr., I believe this is Jesse Dean. Anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just one update from what's in the council packet with the holiday. There isn't enough time to notice the public hearing for the September 18th council meeting date, so we're requesting to change the date of the public hearing to the October 2nd council meeting. Otherwise, staff is available to answer questions regarding the proposed ordinance.
Any questions of staff on? Any questions of staff on the micromobility ordinance? Okay? Seeing none, we're looking for a motion to conduct the first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1556, an ordinance creating Section 1350 of the city code. Note that a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Chesak, is there a second?
Second.
By Stangline, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries on the first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1556. Item two under this would be a call for a public hearing at the October 2nd meeting of the regular city council. Is there a move to hold the public hearing on Proposed Ordinance 1556 on October 2nd? Motion by Stangline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. We have a public hearing for the first meeting in October, and we'll have the second reading then. Next up is item nine B, which is a first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1557, amendment to Section 1015.07 of the city code pertaining to the payment of fees. And this one is James Cranback.
Thank you, Mr. President. So again, the proposed change within Proposed Ordinance 1557 would require a double fee for zoning violations. Currently, we do double fee after the fact building permits. Also with this, again, because of the cutoff dates for public hearings with the Labor Day weekend, the public hearing for this one would also be conducted at the October 2nd meeting. So with that, staff recommends a motion to conduct the first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1557, an ordinance amending Section 1015.07 of the city code, and dispense with the actual reading.
Thank you, Mr. Cranback. Is there any questions of staff? Any questions of staff? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion to hold the first reading of Proposed Ordinance 1557, an ordinance amending Section 1015.07 of the city code and dispense with the actual reading. Again, a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by O'Day, is there a second?
Second, Johnson.
Second by Johnson. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Next up is item nine C, adopting an updated data practices policy. If you recall, this is something we pulled off the agenda last time. This would be a Minister Bergman. Is there anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act requires us to adopt two policies, one for the rights of the public, and one for the rights of the data subject. The last time the City of Brainerd's data practices policy was updated was in 2015. While working with the League of Minnesota Cities on a previous lawsuit, we had the opportunity to receive some direct education from experts at the league, and also one of their attorneys on staff, in regards to the data practices law. As a result, we spent several weeks updating this policy, and for simplicity, we put both of those policies into one. This policy does meet the requirements of the Data Practices Act. As Council President Bevins mentioned, this was on your last agenda. However, Councilmember Chesak had requested that we add some additional fees to make sure that the city can cover its costs when we can. Those changes to the draft that you saw a couple of weeks ago are in your packet, and it is in red. This policy must be updated every August 1st, so this will be on the council agenda every July going forward. I'm happy to answer any questions. City Attorney can answer any legal questions you may have as well.
Any questions for staff? Any questions for staff? Hearing none, we're looking for a motion.
I've moved that we approve the data practice policy as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Chesak, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. O'Day, seconds? Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak?
Yes, even though this hasn't been done as it's required by statute, I do believe we are not penalized by 5% of our LGA.
Thank you. That's great news. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. That data practices policy is adopted. Item D is the budget workshop for next Wednesday at 6:00. We were unable to approve that, because we were at a workshop when it came up, but we're looking for a motion to set the budget workshop for September 13th at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers. And Connie Hillman has something she's dying to say about setting the date.
Not so much the date, as much as the time. The general consensus was to hold it at September 13th at 6:00. Staff is a little concerned with the turnaround of time, with the meeting with Flaherty and Hood on the 11th, the workshop on the 13th, and then getting it in the packet on the 14th, but we will do our best. Otherwise, we would have to call a special meeting if we could not set the preliminary levy at the next council meeting. The Host Capital Investment Committee is at CLC the night of the 13th as well, at 7:00 p.m. Therefore, it would be recommended to start the budget workshop at 5:00 or 5:30, rather than 6:00, to give time for representatives to meet with the capital, Host Capital Investment Committee.
Anybody want to shoot for the budget workshop, September 13th? It's a Wednesday, correct? At 5:00 p.m. here in council chambers?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Stangline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. You going to be a little late?
I wouldn't be there till 6:00. More than likely. You guys can go.
Anyone else have a conflict?
As much.
Well, we're cutting the SPW.
SPW just spends money.
We're cutting the SPW committee.
SPW spends money. You just, you guys just...
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. We've got a, we've got a, going to be late by Mr. O'Day. Any other comments? Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Just get, when you get here, when you can. Well, we'll probably set the preliminary levy at the next council meeting, so you'll get to be there for all the fun.
Can't wait.
I knew you would. Next up is item E, letter to the government. Is there a motion, Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, I would just move that we asked the mayor, on behalf of the city and the council, to request of the governor of Minnesota to call a special session and get the legislation changed, so that we do not have our police department have, so we don't have our police department in jeopardy of liability issues based on the current legislation.
Regarding the SR...
This, all right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Chesak, second by O'Day. Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. That motion carries. You and Governor Walz kind of got a little tight when we were talking about the water.
Oh, very tight.
Right after he left, the water, we had to shut the water off.
Well, I blamed him, but that's not, you know, necessarily true. I will take on this prestigious responsibility, and I will make sure it is done with elegance and grace.
Thank you. Item 10 is a public forum. It's 8:11. We'll open the public forum and allow for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We ask you to keep it three to five minutes. If you're online, hit star three. That'll highlight you on our computer and show us that you're interested in speaking. I will ask a second time if there's anybody in the audience or online that wishes to speak to us on an item that's not currently on the agenda, and a final request. Hearing none, we will close the public forum, and we will go to staff reports. HR Director Schubert. Fire Chief Holmes. Anything from the attorney's office? Community Development Director Cranback?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items here, so I wanted to update city council on 515 South Ninth Street property owned by Stangler Properties LLC. So with that, just as a reminder, the IUP was denied at the August 7 city council meeting, and a resolution was adopted by city council on August 21st, based on the findings. Staff did consult with the city attorney on whether the property should be brought before city council for consideration of revoking its rental license for operating a short-term rental without an approved IUP. So, with discussion with Mr. Langill, it was a recommendation that city council reviews not mandatory in this situation, and would be inconsistent with prior situations. However, based on the final letter drafted to Mr. Stangler after the denial of the IUP, if staff does discover that this property is operating as short-term rental, it would be grounds for revocation of the rental license and review by city council. Also, with the next city Planning Commission meeting, I want to update on a few items that Planning Commission will be working on. First, staff will present a final draft with the Planning Commission, and they'll be holding a public hearing for the off-street parking ordinance. It has been reviewed by both the Planning Commission, as well as the Parking Commission. Staff will also present a draft ordinance regarding short-term rentals, potentially placing a cap on the number that can operate within the city. That was discussed at the last meeting. Also, staff did receive clarification from the city attorney on the interim use language. So if there is a code change, for instance, interim use permits, that if there was a code change that would no longer allow interim use permit, short-term rentals, all IUPs would terminate upon the code update. So with that, I can certainly answer any other questions.
Any questions of our community development director? Hearing none, and City Engineer, Public Works Director, Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Two quick items. First, like Connie mentioned, on the evening of September 13th, we're presenting to the House Capital Investment Committee on the city's three bonding bill project requests, the water treatment facility, the pedestrian bridge over two tenant Lompark, and the Cayuna Trail Extension east of the NP Center. Also, on September 19th, Crow Wing Soil and Water is inviting Commissioner Barrows and our state representatives to talk about the two Clean Water Fund projects, the Buffalo Hills Gully and the Whiskey Creek Project in Baxter. You may see something coming to your emails, but the meeting will be in the Land Services Building on the 19th at 12:30, followed by a site tour of each project, starting with Buffalo Hills.
Thank you. Any updates on our washout into the river, into our peninsula?
We got pretty lucky that it did not wash out over the two inches that we just got. I got a text from DeChantel that it was holding up, but we are wrapping up some final permitting stuff with the DNR and the Corps, and hopefully should be able to get something with a contractor within the week.
Thank you. Finance Director Hillman?
Just a reminder that there won't be a packet for the September 13th budget workshop. Just with a quick turnaround, there won't be time to get a packet out, so.
Thank you. ITGIS Director Strong?
Nothing.
Chief Davis?
Nothing further.
All right. And Minister Bergman?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Couple of things. Reminder, tomorrow is the Employee Appreciation Event at Lompark from 11:30 to 1:30. Thanks to those of you who were able to come serve. Much appreciated. Also, just a second reminder, just wanted to reinforce the Capitol, House Capital Investment Committee on the 13th. The committee will be arriving approximately at 6:45 at CLC on the 13th, so if it's something you're interested in attending, please let me know. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Minnesota Main Streets Lunch and Learn. I thought it was really interesting. I thought it was a good group. That turned out, a lot of downtown representation. The representative was there to facilitate a discussion about downtown Brainerd and share how they've helped other Main Streets maximize their people, and then build assets throughout downtowns. I just thought it was an interesting presentation. On Thursday and Friday of this week, I will be attending the League of Minnesota Cities Clerks and Administrators Academy. Those topics include, it's a two-day event with a variety of topics, including data practices, the open meeting law, HR essentials, financial fundamentals, and a few others. And last but not least, I am super happy to report that the Christmas decorations have been delivered to the streets garage, and we are planning to install them the week after Thanksgiving. They are here and have arrived.
Thank you. Next up, item 12, the Honorable Mayor Bevins.
Appreciate it. First of all, I just want to say that I, too, was able to attend the Main Street presentation that happened. Good information, good discussion there from individuals involved. Also, one heck of a good turkey sandwich from the people there at the wonderful, yesterday is gone, I almost called it last turn, so I apologize for that. And the only thing I've got is, just to piggyback on the last meeting, Kelly Bevins, throughout the Flapjack Festival, that is happening Saturday, September 23rd. It is at, from 8:00 to noon, so you're going to have to get up a little bit earlier this time around, but you got the pancake feed relay, the Flapjack Relay, which is one of the best events that has ever been created, as well... As well as pancake eating contests, and combination with one, James Cranback, Touch a Truck will be happening at the same time. We have joined forces. It is probably the greatest partnership that has ever happened.
Maybe some sticky trucks.
You can, you can get all greased up and syruped up, get that hand nice and gooey.